All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting for the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for November 19, 2019. I call this meeting to order. Shall we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, may we have roll call, please?
Certainly, ma'am. Good evening, President Logarta. Trustee Dos.
Present.
Trustee Fauqua.
Here.
Trustee Santos.
Present.
Trustee Rui Vivar.
Here.
And President Logarta.
Present.
We are all present and accounted for.
Thank you. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda. If there are no updates, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. And for the minutes from our last meeting on October 15, 2019, is there a motion to move?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, in looking at the agenda, it looks like we are moving forward with the election of officers for Vice President. Joseph, if you can kind of guide us in this process again.
Okay, yes, thank you, Madam President. We don't do this very often. Usually, this happens once a year and it coincides with the selection of a new president, too. But as you recall, our Vice President vacated his position and creating an opening for the Vice President position. So for tonight, we're only electing Vice President. And so any member of the body can make a nomination and seek a second. And you would make that call for nominations. And if there's a, sometimes there's more than one nomination, we tell nominations are made, then you would close the nominations and we would vote on them. And hopefully, at the end of it all, we have a new Vice President.
Okay.
So you can open for nominations for the Office of Vice President.
So I will go ahead and open the nomination for the Office of Vice President. Any firsts? May I be the first?
You absolutely may nominate somebody.
I would like to nominate Ms. Teresa Fauqua as Vice President.
Ask for a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can she vote for herself?
At this point, you, she does have the option to decline the nomination, but you also have the ability to ask if there are any other nominations.
Are there any other nomination? There is a first and a second.
I nominate Justine.
Okay, do we have a second?
If there's not a second for that nomination, then that nomination doesn't go forward.
Okay, so if there is no second, the nomination does not go forward. But can she nominate herself?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I just wanted to reg, that you can nominate yourself.
Tackle yourself.
You can second yourself?
It's a very democratic process.
Yeah. Thanks. All right, so.
One last call if there are any more nominee.
Any more nominations?
Then seeing, then you would close the nominations.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the nomination and.
And typically, you would take the vote in the order that you received. So you would call for a vote on Teresa Fauqua's nomination for Vice President.
Okay, so I received, so I nominated Teresa, and then the second was Justine. I mean, no, Lauren. And then, so, sorry, the verb is.
We can do a roll call to affirm that?
Uh huh. Okay, so may we have roll call?
You certainly may. So we're voting on Teresa Fauqua becoming Vice President. Trustee Dos?
Yes.
Trustee Fauqua?
No.
Okay, and she can decline, right?
She can.
Okay. All right.
Trustee Rui Vivar?
Yes.
Trustee Santos?
Yes.
And President Logarta?
Yes.
So the nomination carries on a four to one vote. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Vice President.
Thank you.
Instantly.
Instant gratification. It's not even like this at the bank.
It's like the other one never even.
At the bank, we have to order a new one. All right. Sorry about that. That was a little rusty, but I'm glad I have Joseph to back me up.
We don't do elections very often, and I don't ever recall.
We're learning, we're learning.
President, a little unusual.
So, thank you. So if I can have the Director's report?
Yes, we have, by request, we are bringing forward three different policies for review. And the first one we talked about at our last meeting, is the first one on the agenda, is a draft of emergency closure policy. And I'm going to turn that over to Chayla to give you a quick overview. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it and roll for discussion. We can, you can alter it, you can approve it as it is, you can throw the whole thing out. It's a pleasure of the Board of Trustees, so take it away, Chayla.
So this is a brand-new policy. In the past, we have relied on just an internal procedure. Hopefully, we're not going to have cause to use this very often, but there have been actually quite a few varied things that have come up. And so it is good to have a standard for how to respond to these and when and if it becomes necessary to close the library, which is something that all of the library staff take very seriously, because that takes it away from the community. They no longer have access for that day. So I think the most common thing that would occur is a power outage. We recently had that very long-term power outage that thankfully didn't affect Daily City. But we have sporadic outages, and of course, if it is too dark to read, we do close the library for safety reasons and because there's not much you can do in there. And a lot of our libraries are lucky enough to have big, beautiful picture windows, so they do stay light fairly long. If we have an earthquake or something like that, you know, staff will assess if things have fallen over. The previous policy we had on temperature has been kind of rolled into that. So if it becomes too warm in the library, keeping in mind that while patrons can leave, the staff can't. So we do sometimes look into the need to close for that reason. And then it is intended to be all-encompassing, so something we didn't anticipate, something that came up not too long ago was the smoke, things like that. So we would just use this as a guide as to whether or not we can remain open. And if we cannot, how the staff will go about ensuring an orderly closing of the library. So this would, just to be clear, this would supersede the closure policy related strictly to heat and would be a more blanket policy.
And where is this policy posted within the library?
It is, it's a draft policy now, so it is not posted anywhere. So if it is endorsed by the library board, it would go into our binders, which is just something that's available at the desk. And then, of course, it goes on our website as well. We don't, we usually only post a couple of the policies, like on a wall. One of those being the unattended child policy and then the behavior policy, things that we refer to really frequently. But if you wanted this posted, we could do this as well.
And what about in extreme situations like fire? Is that indicated here? I don't think I saw it.
Yeah, so item six, kind of in the procedures, if it's not safe to remain in the building, leave. And then from outside, you know, contact emergency services. We are also fortunate, in addition to having beautiful picture windows, to be located right next to emergency services in, I think, all of our libraries.
Libraries are strategically located very close to fire stations, so that's a nice thing.
So for number seven, well, for number seven, it says, "Part-time staff may also go to another branch to finish their shifts or go home unpaid for time lost." I don't, I think we talked about that before, like them, like it's, you know, like it's like, like they're not in control of like what happens. And so would it be possible for them to still be paid for the time that they were to, if they were to stay?
I think we just.
It's a board discretion. We would give them the option, it's only one library was affected. Let's say that they were working at Westlake Library. And Westlake Library had to be closed for one of the reasons. But Ceremony Library was unaffected. We would give that person an option to finish their shift at Ceremony. And I suppose if they, so what you're proposing is because they had no control of the situation, that they should be paid for the end of the day? Or they did their scheduled shift?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could change that.
Do we have to like motion to approve?
Well, I think, I think when you're all done, you would take, you would incorporate that into your motion. But I think we're still at the discussion.
Still with the discussion.
So just to be clear, are you proposing simply removing all the words after, or go home unpaid?
That little clause?
So it would just be, "Part-time staff may also go to another branch to finish their shifts?"
I think what I'm hearing is.
So just take away, "Or go home unpaid for time lost."
I lost, yeah.
So we'll just finish right there.
Oh, I'm confused now. I thought what she was proposing, because the employee doesn't have any control over the situation, they would be paid through the end of their shift.
Oh, and they would just go home.
Whether they chose to go to another library or not. Is that what you were saying?
Well, that and also, I think, like, because then, like, what's the difference between, well, I know, like, full-time staff and part-time staff, like, there's a difference. So full-time staff, like, if they were to go to another branch, they would still get paid.
Right.
And then I think with part-time staff, they should still be paid, too.
But it says, "Their part-time staff may also go to another branch to finish their shifts."
Right.
So not giving them the option, "Or go home."
Well, what if they don't drive?
Yeah, I think that is one of the differences.
So we can, you know, we can even, they can have something, maybe come back the next day if they wanted to make up the lost hours. Can they do that?
It would depend on their assignment.
I think, well, I guess a question to me is, in this case, if we were, because I do think it is unfair, right, like, part-time staff don't have as much flexibility in being able to switch site to site. Would it be a big budget impact to just say?
We're going to pay you for the rest of the day.
For our part-time staff.
I'm assuming this is.
Whether you work it or not.
On a devastating catastrophic incident, it's going to happen one time, so.
A one-off, yeah.
Let's say they were two hours into a six-hour shift.
That's still not a lot, yeah.
And they didn't have the ability to get to another library?
Can I propose maybe taking out the word "full-time" to just be "staff"? And just say, "If there's at least an hour and a half left in the workday, staff are to go to another branch to finish their shift," and eliminate the second sentence?
Or we can do, "Part-time staff may go to another branch and finish their shifts or go home, period, paid."
Yeah.
Because, I mean, that's really where it is, and I think that this is really going to be like a one-off situation.
Hopefully, no.
Yeah, never, because I don't think in the history of you all being at the branch.
And also depending if it's a big branch or a small amount of part-time.
Yeah.
If it's Bayshore, that's just one or half.
Yeah, it's like hour and a, yeah, for one person.
So that could be. Is that, so.
Clarifying what we're asking.
So if there's at least an hour and a half, one and a half hours left in the workday, "Full-time staff are to go to another branch to finish their shifts, "part-time staff may also go to another branch to finish their shifts," or go home.
With or without.
But what if there's, if it's more than, if it's more than an hour and a half?
We typically, I mean, people usually will just go work at another branch.
For the most part, right?
Maybe not mentioning the hours, but the amount of hours, but just say, if there's, if there's hours left in the workday.
I think it's for when it does come, it's actually for the benefit in the employee. If it's getting close to the end of the day, we don't want them to have to drive across town, you know, to finish up 45 minutes of a shift. It was really for the benefit of the employee. This is left, this is leftover from the previous internal policy. And so it absolutely could be changed. It could even be omitted, but I do think it is valuable to have staff have direction as to what their, say, the power goes out and it becomes really dark or whatever, the, you know, and they, is it just a snow day? Do they get to go home or should they go somewhere else?
What has been experienced, if this ever happened, did it ever experience in any of the branches? And what was some of the feedbacks from?
People, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an unusual situation, and people will usually go, well, the full-time staff will usually go to another library and work on projects there. And the part-time staff have typically opted to go home.
I wonder if we can wait and then you guys can talk to your staff, what would they want? Would they prefer to go home?
If there's one and a half hours left in the workday.
Well, and also.
I think that's the or part of it, right?
And full-time staff.
If there's at least one and a half hours left in the workday, which isn't, you know, much, full-time staff can go to another branch and finish their shifts. Part-time staff may go to another branch or go home. That's what, kind of what we would want to be proposed. But then you, what you're saying is, it should be the, like, like if there's more than, then.
Than an hour and a half.
They should, they should still get paid?
That's what I'm saying. So where do we cross the line there, if it's more than an hour and a half? We can always table this.
Yeah, maybe the hours part, we can.
Go and research on it.
Yeah, and I think for me is just, I just want to, for me, I would, I'm just trying to advocate for people to get paid still. So I think that's my opinion.
Is there consensus on that? Or would you prefer to wait?
I'm the same, like, I want them to get paid, because in a natural disaster, they have no control over that situation, so.
We can go for it if. What do you think?
So then, if there is hours left in the workday, not at least?
Not one and a half, at least.
So if there is hours left in the workday, "Full-time staff are to go to another branch to finish their shifts, "part-time, part-time staff may go to another branch to finish their shifts or go home." And then do you want to put like an extra blurb of, "Part-time and full-time has the opportunity to get paid in the event of "natural disaster"?
If it's a natural disaster, if it's something that is uncontrollable.
Big power outage.
Yeah.
68 degrees. It hit 68 degrees at 1 o'clock. At one library, I would like the staff to come and help out.
87, 86?
I'm sorry, 80.
That's unusual.
That is quite comfy.
Yeah, I don't feel like the extra text is necessary. I feel like if we take out the unpaid, it's kind of implied that it's going to be paid time.
Okay, so, yeah, shorter is better, so.
I think so, yeah.
So both full-time and part-time would have the option, if their branch is closed, they can go home with pay for that day?
And we're leaving the hour and a half, or we're taking that out?
I would take out the hour and a half. Is that what we're, because the hour and a half really doesn't have much.
Okay, so we need to watch out, because if we're giving them a chance, you may also go, or go home. What if they all decide to go home?
If they're, but if they're out of, they're out of commission, would it matter much?
If it fits for part-time staff, yeah.
So if there's time left in the workday, full-time staff?
Go to another branch.
Are we giving them the choice? Are we?
That's what I'm saying. So it sounds like we're giving them the choice, because if I'm a part-time and I say, "You can go to another branch or you can go home, paid." I immediately am going to say, "I'll go home." So if everybody decided to go home, and then who's going to do the job? Who's going to?
So would you, you would want like some staff members to go to another branch? Like, at least a part of the staff members for that branch that's, that's not able to be open, go to like another branch?
Maybe that will be up to you guys, because you will know your branches very well. So maybe there's something there based on staff needed or staff arrangement.
It's possible that this maybe doesn't belong in this particular policy, too, that that's more of a staff policy issue and should be omitted?
And the other, I mean, not to make it even more convoluted, but I think we're all thinking in terms of a one-time incident, a power outage, a flood or something. What if it's a devastating earthquake and the branch is destroyed? I think we have to be clear that.
Well, the full-time staff have to report. They're emergency responders.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to be that specific.
Why don't we just cross off seven?
Item seven, okay, and that will be something.
And then it's determined by the branch manager.
Exactly. All this thinking we did.
Judgment.
We just wanted to make sure people got paid, you know?
Okay.
Thank you, team.
All right, so.
So I think we are looking for a motion and an endorsement?
To take that out.
To endorse the policy with that, with that change.
Removed.
With the removed, yes.
So do we do that now, or after we review? Are there other comments?
Let's do one.
Oh, yeah.
Are there other items that we want to take a look at? For me, I'm wondering if we should have specific policies when it comes to fire, when it comes to earthquake, when it comes to outage, outages, because in the bank, we have specific policies for each.
Oh, interesting.
But this is, the bank is different, right? We handle large volumes of cash, so it's different from the library. And then also, too, another thing is, I don't know if it's pertinent for this, we actually have the policy posted on every desk so that team members know what to do in the event of, you know, something happening. It's in the form of a flip chart.
So it's like an emergency response guide? I think that would be maybe something a little bit different from that.
Okay, okay.
But that would be very helpful.
I don't know if you guys wanted, you know, this more general, or did you want it very specific?
I think that might be something that would be done at a, at a city level.
Okay.
Because it wouldn't be specific to the library necessarily. I'm sure finance or human resources would have the same process.
Well, if the fire was localized, it's an interesting prospect.
So are they aware of who the go-to as far as an emergency?
Like, do they know what their procedures are?
The procedures?
They're not going to have time to read or click up the book.
So under California Government Section, Government Code Section 3200, all public employees become disaster service workers in the event of a disaster. For now, the workforce is instructed to either report back to their normal place of work, if they can, or they can report either to City Hall or War Memorial in a very big catastrophic emergency. The War Memorial, we designated as the City of Daily City's Office of Emergency Service, I mean, excuse me, Emergency Operations Center. And so that would be where employees would report. Some people would be assigned to stay there and help with the planning of the response and recovery. Others would probably be deployed to the field, specifically for library people, because most of them don't drive backhoes and they're not certified in life safety and all. Typically, library-type employees, and I've put recreation in there, too, become shelter operator people. So if we had to open up emergency shelters for the city for people that get displaced, library staff, recreation staff, and some of the admin staff would be assigned to help coordinate with the Red Cross.
Sites, okay.
At shelter sites. And the shelter sites that we have designated of our facilities are the Bayshore Community Center, War Memorial Community Center, and Pacelli Gym.
Okay.
And in fact, we are doing staff training on shelter operations in a couple of weeks.
What's the frequency of that training?
Not nearly frequent enough. You know, the entire city organization has trainings, and we just did one for executive-level staff maybe two weeks ago. But I think going forward, they used to happen almost quarterly. It's less frequent now, but I think it'll probably be at the minimum annually, or maybe twice a year. There's also training that can be done online for government workers that we, that city workers would be doing along with the actual practical training in the field.
Do we have anything for a lockdown, for a shooting somewhat?
We have had active shooter training for the library staff. I mean, in fact, there was a request to have it again, because it's been maybe a year and a half since we did our last one. There's not any written guidelines for that, that I'm aware of.
And there is no lock, locking down the libraries. They're designed around openness, so it's more of a.
What if? Are we prepared for it?
You know, we're not, we're not armed, other than the police folks. If somebody comes in with a gun, it would be a terribly frightening situation.
Also, the staff, are they CPR-equipped? First aid certified?
A lot of the recreation staff are certified.
What about libraries?
Libraries, no.
It's been many, many years.
So if, I mean, children come there, in a case of an emergency such as, what would your staff do?
Call 911.
Wouldn't it be good if we?
Oh, absolutely. I think there's a benefit and value in having all staff trained at least in basic.
Like full-time staff?
I think that's a great idea.
And then when you guys are going to these trainings, is it limited to, like, is it the entire staff that's attending the training? Or is it limited to the branch managers?
For the shelter management?
For the shelter management.
All full-time staff and a handful of part-time staff are invited. I expect probably 90% of our full-time staff to be in attendance. We're closing our admin offices for the occasion, you know, to make people available. On the emergency training, there's many levels of training for first aid and CPR. There's, the Fire Department is really out in the community doing just the very basics. doing just the very basic CPR that you can... it's less than an hour. Some of our staff go through, like, twenty-hour certification programs for... In fact, we have certified trainers for CPR on the recreation staff. So they go through the extended training for that. But maybe we can look at at least starting with the very basic training. I know the Fire Department's taken it to a lot of the schools in the area, and they'll actually have a gymnasium full of people listening as they go through step by step. They've also done it in the mall. They've done it at the senior center. So certainly, that's something where we can start getting staff at least.
Would that be part of a hiring?
We would rely on somebody from the Fire Department to do the training, and we would schedule staff.
So it could be a part of a qualification, if, you know, when you hire a new staff?
There are some positions, you know, if you're going to be a lifeguard, we don't hire lifeguards that aren't already certified. If it would be a requirement upon... upon hiring?
Upon hiring. So if I'm applying for a position as a librarian, one of the qualifications that I would ask for are you a CPR-certified?
So that's an issue that would become a little bit more of a labor issue, and it would be determined, I think, by the Personnel Board and City Council. I like the idea. It might limit our applicant pool, but maybe once they're hired, we can offer the training to them?
Either or. I mean, I'm just suggesting...
No, I think it's a great idea. Certainly, we have a lot of members of the public passing through our doors.
Because I know they're attached next to it's always a Fire Department, but any emergency... it can happen, just like that, by saving a life, like in two seconds.
It makes a difference. You know, for John Daly Library and for Westlake, they're not right next to the libraries like they are at Bay Shore and Ceremony, but...
The dispatcher works you through part-time, too.
I think that is a good New Year's resolution, is to make an effort to get our full-time staff especially trained, at least in a basic life safety.
Yes, just the basic. And then let the rest, all the bleeding and gushing of blood for the big guys.
And we will, for sure, in the coming year, have another active shooter training for all the full-time staff.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it would be good to have some sort of... I mean, I think it would be... I don't know what policies we have around, like, closing for emergencies like that, or just like emergency protocols around it, but it would be good at some point to be able to look at some. Or if not, are there some examples we can pull from to create one for Daly City?
For closing, like, in the event of a shooting?
Yeah, in the event of something like that.
Oh, I think it would be covered.
I think it would probably become a crime scene, and it would be closed.
Closed.
I mean, at least policies around, like, what to expect, like patrons, yeah.
Something drafted.
Like, what are librarians expected to do in the case of, yeah.
That does become a union thing.
Oh, it does.
What librarians' responsibilities are in a case like that would become a labor issue, I think.
Would it be more union, yeah, union decision?
Yeah, I, you know, all of our full-time library staff are union members, and I think...
They're only there for the books. It's not a book untouchable.
Yeah.
See, that's very...
It's hard for them to go out of their, like, job requirement that would have had been indicated upon hiring, I think, yeah.
So my scenario, if there's an earthquake, because we've been having earthquakes lately, and if it's a major earthquake and it starts crumbling down, knock on wood, would the librarians leave the libraries with patrons inside? Or they would want to go see their parents? What's going to happen to the patrons? And who's in charge?
I would say whoever the senior member of the library staff, the branch manager, would...
So is that something that they sign on the contract? That if anything like that happened, that they are responsible?
Well, it's state law that if you are a public employee, in an event like what you're describing, they would transition from being a city employee to a disaster service worker. And I think it's a reasonable ex...
Expectation?
Expectation, thank you. A reasonable expectation that if somebody in the library became a disaster service worker, that it would be incumbent on them to help with the evacuation of the library. Of course, public safety would get involved, too, in evacuations. So that would be from the Police Department and Fire Department. But if the library was open when it happened, I would hope that the library staff could successfully evacuate a library before public safety arrived. Every once in a while, there's a patron that might not cooperate, but, you know, hopefully, most would.
But that's not mandatory if they don't cooperate, yeah?
For the patron?
No, for the staff.
I think it's...
I mean, if they're aware that they became...
The staff is aware that they become disaster service workers, and I think it's a reasonable expectation. Why am I having a hard word, a hard, difficult time with that word? It would be an expectation that as a disaster service worker, that would be part of their new job responsibility. They're no longer functioning as a librarian. They're functioning as a disaster service worker.
To that, if that's already in-house, then it's the same thing as applying CPR.
So then just add the CPR training to their...
That's a skill. I think that's the difference.
I mean, if they don't know how to do CPR and there's an emergency, well, why didn't you apply CPR?
I think that might, just outside looking in, I think they should actually get trained for it, and it would be... There'd be more benefit as opposed to not. But I think that there may be a little bit of, like, liability if they are administering CPR, and that's not in their job family, in their role as, like, a first responder. So, because, you know, even at the bank, where we serve, like, hundreds of customers daily, same type of situation. If anything were to happen, I'd take on the role of, you know, in an emergency, but I don't have to be CPR-certified in order to, you know, like, I... And I wouldn't be, because that would cause a liability, just in case.
No, there's a state law now that is protect you, yeah. Good Samaritan.
If you're making a good faith effort to save a life, still...
You're not liable or anything.
So I think that's a thing that is up for discussion, because I think it's... I think it would be a great thing to have, like, to your point, there's so many children that come through that place, eating, like, you know, candies, and, you know, that could very well happen.
Yeah. I do see the requiring around hiring for folks, that, like, have that as a qualification. Like, I could see how that could be an issue, and I think, you know, I think the accessibility to... Yeah, it could be a plus, you know, because the accessibility to the skills training is different for people. But the idea of possibly putting resources towards having that available to all staff, just as a... Just in case, or it could be a benefit for them, too, to have it under their belt, to have that certification. Sounds good to me, yeah.
Always stuck in an emergency.
It took a left turn.
I know. Are there any other topics on the emergency closure policy that we wanted to discuss? Or review, make updates to? No, we're good. For number six, if it is not safe to remain in the building, skip the above steps and lock up and leave immediately. Is it a requirement to lock up? Let's say it's a fire, right, they would just leave immediately.
I can put if possible.
If possible, yeah, lock up and leave immediately. And then is there anything, like, a safe place? We discussed that. There's a safe... the safe place is War Memorial, is it City Hall and...
Bay Shore.
Well, the two places they would report initially would be either City Hall or War Memorial. Instinctively, people will respond back to their normal place of work. So people would show up, maybe at Ceremony Library, and we would direct them to either of those locations. And/or to wait for an assignment, because if it's a really widespread natural disaster, we will go in 24/7 mode, not just public safety, but all city forces. So they could wait for an assignment, and if they get assigned to, say, the shelter at Pacelli Gym, they'd probably get scheduled in twelve-hour shifts, and they may be told, you know, "Your shift is going to start at midnight. Why don't you go home, get some rest if you can, and come back at midnight? We'll need you to relieve the people who are already there." So it's kind of a very dynamic situation, and thankfully, one that in my 23 years here, we've only opened the Emergency Operations Center one time. And that was when we had some widespread flooding and trees down. I think it was 1999. But we help out, too. I know I was in the Emergency Operations Center in San Bruno when the gas explosion happened, and my shift was graveyard. I was there from midnight or so until noon the next day to relieve the San Bruno folks who were exhausted. There's lots of great mutual aid in California. So if it's a Bay Area incident, we can pretty much rely on getting a lot of assistance from our brothers and sisters in the southern part of the state.
All right, so any other comments?
Well, just a time check. It's 6:40, and then I know that Victoria had to leave early, right?
Thank you. All right, so is there a motion to approve number seven on the emergency closure policy?
It's removing it. Be removed.
Yeah, removing it entirely.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then just a small, little parentheses for number six, lock up if possible.
For safety.
Okay, for safety, because in the event of, you know, natural disaster such as a fire, we don't want them to think about locking up, or they should just run. Okay, so motion to approve for number six update?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. All right. So, moving on to, is it okay to...
Absolutely.
Okay, so in the interest of time, because we have Ms. Mugbalang here from GCPLA, I will update our fundraising segment for the trustees' report, and welcome her to speak.
Hi, thank you so much.
Hi.
I just wanted to share with you that today, we, the Daly City Public Library Associates, had our annual retreat to make plans for next year. And we have big plans. We have a lot of changes. We have five people who are leaving our board, but we have six people coming in, so...
Oh, good, yeah.
And they're all, like, important, you know, people in our community, people that we really feel have, you know, the library's best interests at heart, and will help us try to do the best we can to support the library. So we're looking forward to lots of changes and lots of positive advancements.
Nice job with that rethought, right?
Yeah, it was, you know, a little scary at first, but we, yeah. I mean, I think we really have a fantastic group. We've had a fantastic group, and it's good to change things around, and because, you know, the more people you... you just expand. Nobody's leaving us completely, because they love us and they love the library. And, you know, then it's not like we're really losing people. We're just... They won't be attending the meetings, but they still plan on being present for events and planning and everything. So really, we're just growing our group of people that's working, so.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for the update. All right, so continuing on. So let's go ahead and talk about the drafted, updated library community meeting room policy.
So, we long had a community meeting room policy. It looks like back to 1998. And it's been amended a few times over the years, but there were just a few things that were a little bit out of date. For example, we don't have a podium anymore, but we've added things. And then there were some procedural things in how people reserve it. And then finally, based on an interpretation of the ALA's Library Bill of Rights, we discovered that we should probably not be excluding certain types of uses, specifically religious and political uses, since it is a public forum. So I simply removed the offending part of the policy. And then the other, with the document you have before you, you can see the other changes that were made. We are adding... people are going to be applying to use it online, rather than using fax, which we're happy about. And we are adding a requirement that they do put their library card, since it's a library service. Are there any questions? I have to say that because of, because we no longer have Saturday hours at Ceremony, and we're only open into the... late into the evening, two days a week, the use of the room has been curtailed, just due to availability.
Usage because of availability.
So we have, every Tuesday evening, the Coder Dojo meets in there. They provide a really wonderful program for young people. And then we have various homeowners groups and things like that. But, yeah, it's more of availability is the limiting factor for people.
What's the timeline on reservations? Once approved by the Director of Library and Recreation Services, or his or her designee, groups may reserve the room online or by telephone. What's the timeline for them to receive back the response, if it's a go or not?
Typically, within a day or two. It's a small staff, and so I wanted to add a little flexibility in there. We have had instances where people have needed a quick turnaround, and the person who normally does it was out, and so things fell through. So I didn't want to be too specific, but we can add a time limit, I suppose.
Well, it also says right here, allow up to five business days for approval. So I guess that's a timeline, right?
Oh, I didn't read through that. So there's a... so they would put in a request to become a user of the room, and then separate from that, they would request time slots. And that is, we have an online system for that, so they do typically get a pretty quick approval on that.
Small curiosity around the... why was crossed out that we scheduled through library staff? I think it just makes it a little bit unclear how reservations are made. It's the second paragraph under number one, reservations.
Well, they don't do it through staff. They do it online.
Okay, maybe we need to clarify. Oh, I see, it's up here.
So there's a page on the website that, you know, lists the amenities and the availability.
It does list it in the previous. I didn't see.
Just in case I'm not seeing it, what time are they supposed to rent to the room, from what time to what time?
There are windows of availability based on our needs generally. For instance, I was in there earlier today doing storytime, so we use it. We have it for internal use. So currently, well, it's Monday and Tuesday evenings, and I believe also Tuesday mornings. It's available all day Wednesday and I think all day Friday, I believe.
Until libraries closed.
Yeah, everyone needs to have wrapped up and exited by about 10 till because we have somebody come through and do a sweep to make sure there's no one hiding in the library. And, yeah, there's no use outside of library open hours.
Questions? Do you have anything in the policy? Like you have the right to refuse service should?
Well, I think.
It says for.
For P.
Yeah, that we may deny future use for groups that violate our rules. Thankfully, we had limited drop, that's at the very end of the.
On the last page.
At the top. We've had very few incidents down there. Every once in a while.
Okay.
Neighborhood association meeting will get a little.
And also, just to be clear, anything that's changed? The people that are regular users now would be right in front of them.
Okay. So it looks good to me. Yeah. So are we good?
Yeah.
Do we? So.
Motion.
Okay. So motion to approve the public use of library community meeting room.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Does these have to go approved by the council? Before it goes public?
If you noted at the end, there was a mention of it going to council. And that was when, at different points, we have actually charged a fee. So it became a fee-related issue, which does go to council. But these changes would not, as far as I know.
Okay.
And then the last one, the draft updated Library Bill of Rights.
So the Library Bill of Rights is drafted by a group of librarians with the American Library Association. So, and I want to thank, I think, Justina, who brought it up, that it was actually out of date. It was missing the latest portion that they have added regarding privacy, which I thought was really timely. So I've, it is something they've written, so we would not necessarily edit it. But it does get endorsed locally typically. And each, each part of this also, the American Library Association provides guidance, if, you know, on things like how that would impact community rooms and other things like that. It's a good guiding, guiding document.
Was number seven added at Ceremonial? Or it's been there?
It was added by the ALA Council.
This year.
It's really good. It's really, it's equity, you know? Especially with Daily City being so diverse.
I think for number seven, if, could we add some language in there?
I was thinking the same thing. Race, religion.
Genders.
Or.
Social, economic.
So it will be a little bit more.
Yeah. So race, religion, gender, identity, social, economic background.
It covers all.
Yeah, no, I understand that. We've just never varied from what the ALA has approved. So I don't. This is the ALA.
This is the ALA language. So I'm pretty sure those segments are covered in background and views. But I'm used to kind of longer.
Apprenticeships is next to it.
There are East Coast types, maybe they're less inclined to be so specific. I don't know. I'm sure that it was definitely their intention based on their other publications.
I mean, it looks good on the papers. But if, if, if we don't put it out there, that it is covered. It is right there. Because we can all say, yeah, background covers all that. But somebody else can elaborate it in a different way.
It's, this is actually something that is also covered by California law.
Okay. Well, if it's worldwide, I mean, if it's global wide, then we go with it.
We'll go with that.
Yes.
I think it would be acceptable to annotate it. I mean, there's the, the American Library Association Bill of Rights, which is what you would be affirming. But if you want to annotate and add that the Daily City Public Library Board of Trustees also believes, and then the language you were discussing could be incorporated as almost like a footnote to number seven? I think, would that be acceptable? I think it would be. And just to differentiate that, the document before you is the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights, but you would take it a step further. And I think just give yourselves credit after number seven and saying the Daily City Public Library Board of Trustees affirms that whatever that language is you were just discussing, we could include there. If the board so desires.
Yeah. And then if whoever comes later, if they decided to take that off. But at least it's there.
Yeah.
So what, what language? Justina, did you have some language in mind?
Well, I just wanted to add gender and racial, ethnic, identity.
Race, religion, gender. What's the gender or identity?
Gender.
Identity?
I think gender is fine.
Okay. Gender and then social, economic background.
So instead of background, we should take away background. Put ethnicity. I'm trying to make it look.
So gender, race, ethnicity, socio-economic background.
Social, economic status.
Status. I think the one that gets sticky is the age typically. When there is debate, that is typically what it's around.
Include.
Yeah, no, age and reaffirmed. Okay.
I'll just also add, I mean, I know we're a sanctuary city, but just nationality, citizenship.
Is that indicated in origin or not necessarily?
So nationality might be indicated, but not necessarily citizenship status?
So citizenship.
Would you please read that out for us?
Library Board of Trustees, or I'm sorry, affirms that the above applies to gender, race, ethnicity, socio-economic status and citizenship.
What does that sound, guys?
So it'd be just like an asterisk at the bottom?
Yeah.
It would be below.
Maybe more elegant.
And attributed to the Librarian's Board of Trustees for everything above that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So motion to approve the added footnote as it pertains to background.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
21 years in between endorsements. And then, yeah, looking at the ALA, it seems like they. Every 20, they're in like a 20-year cycle of updating it. So thank you and congratulations.
So for our trustees' report, I know that we wanted to put on the agenda budget priorities. In our last conversation, we wanted to see if we could extend the hours for Bay Shore and that would require, refresh my memory, maybe like one more additional team member or.
I think a minimum of two.
A minimum of two.
Ideally, three.
Okay. So we wanted to, I think, keep this as an item for, up for discussion.
And then I know the last meeting, we talked about whether or not we wanted to have a December meeting. Did we land on a decision for that? I was just curious.
So typically, the December meetings are canceled. And the, I've been on the board two years now, and the last two have been canceled in December. So I think we'll probably be canceling and meet again in January 2020.
In terms of the budget priorities, it is really a timely issue. We're in the process of giving an update. Right now, the way our budget is being reviewed is keeping everything the way it is. So adding three new staff is a separate part of the budget we haven't done for a long, long time in Daily City. And that's a supplemental request. And that's where we'll be requesting staff to fulfill that goal. So I just want to make sure, before we leave that topic, that the consensus is the budget priority for supplemental requests would be restoring libraries' hours at Bay Shore.
Yes.
And by then, Monday through Friday.
Yes.
Yes.
And that would.
In our last discussion, I think it was just update, like we wanted to take small steps, right? So we don't want to go full-fledged and then get turned out.
Yeah, from 16 hours to 30.
Did we say 20 or 30?
32.
32.
Oh, it was 32, yeah.
Yes. It's probably, it's difficult to split up the people that would be working there. I think ideally, if we restored back to.
24.
We wanted to add one more day. So eight, eight.
So.
16. Yeah, that's right. It was the third, 23rd day.
And then ask for two additional staff members.
If, if we were successful in getting two additional staff members, we could open it Monday through Friday. And also, that would give us the flexibility of having the John Daly staff separate from Bay Shore. Right now, it's the same bodies.
It's the same staff, yeah, going back and forth.
So the other benefit of that would be that we'd also simultaneously have the ability to restore a John Daly.
Yeah, there would be like one person.
Both of those branches could go back to a Monday through Friday schedule.
Yeah, we did say two because of that reason.
Yeah. So, I mean, are we talking about full-time employees? Or are we talking about, are we okay with part-time?
It would be one full-time and one part-time.
I think operationally, we would really have to have two full-time.
Okay, so then that creates that.
Ideally, a full-time.
Right. Because we have one full-time person that is, that left months and months ago. And it takes months. We are, we are working on it, but there is no rushing it. It is a thing that invariably takes minimum of four months and sometimes up to seven months. And so during that time, we have insufficient staff for the remaining staff to be able to take their lunch, their unpaid lunch break. So we have to send people over. And it creates real operational difficulties.
And I imagine.
We're operating at minimum staffing. It's not a good policy.
So, and I imagine when somebody calls out sick, it's chaos.
It is.
It's, it's, you're running thin where, you know, and, you know.
Or today, when somebody was there and had to go home because of a family emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any good stories?
It just feels like better budget planning if you find full-time versus part-time, you know, for long-term planning, yeah.
When we are staffed that thin, are we out of compliance in any way? Where, you know, like, do there always need to be like two staff members closing? A checks and balance, making sure, right?
There is a minimum of two staff on duty. But keeping in mind then that people in the middle of the day have an unpaid meal break and they are entitled to a rest break in the morning and the evening.
Right.
So, so you really need three.
You really need three.
Either or, it's busy or quiet, you need three.
And you never want to give the impression that you're discouraging any breaks either, even though there's an influx of, you know, patrons coming in. Okay, so we advocate for three, three additional FTE. What do we need to do to do that?
We will carry it forward in written form. But I think as advocates of the libraries, we talked about it a little bit at our last meeting. Each of you was appointed or nominated by a council member. I wouldn't strongly suggest that you share your views. If you've reached consensus, then this is the direction you want.
Did we have a number for that? Like a general number with salary and benefits?
We do.
How much do we start?
I don't have it with me. I can, I can share that.
And the request is meant to be more narrative than the actual committee grade.
But there is, there is a dollar amount tied to it.
For, well, depending on the.
I just, I just want to know how much of an ask we're making.
In addition to the full-time staff. You will have supplemental part-time staff as well for those extra hours.
So what you're saying is if we can get the three FTE, which we need anyway, then we can open up Bay Shore five days.
Yes, that would be five days. And John Daly as well.
And John Daly, okay.
Now, part of the discussion out there. So the Saturday hours have disappeared from Ceremony a couple of years ago.
And they want it back. Patrons want it back, yeah.
In terms of priorities, is a priority five days at?
Across the board or?
Or do we want a sixth day at Ceremony?
I see what you're saying.
Theoretically, that Saturday, you could probably serve more people.
I would.
But not reach the isolated community of Bay Shore. So that's kind of the rub is. If you had to set priorities, we've, we've talked almost exclusively about Bay Shore. But does Ceremony fall below that? Or is it not even on the table right now?
I think both. Because every, every community is a priority. That's how I feel. So whether it's Bay Shore, I would, if I was a, if I was, you know, not a Bay Shore, I would vouch for both, for both.
If, if it's an either or, do you have a priority? Or that you value them equally?
I can't take one and leave the other one down. I had to take both.
Is that the consensus too?
That's, that's how I feel. Because if I'm sitting over here making that decision, that decision would be, that's the reason I was appointed, to sit here for all libraries.
And then maybe, you know, because the in, the usage with that library is because it's consistent, right? With consistent hours, you're going to see more usage, right? I would hope. And then at that point, after that, then we can kind of revisit to see if there is a sixth day.
Maybe review in a year to see.
I would love to, I would love to have a library open on a Saturday as a mother community.
And we do have Westlake, but there's.
Yeah, like more of, more libraries open on Saturday. Okay. So we're all in agreeance. We're going to push for three full-time employees. But we, so you're talking about time crunch. Are we able to find out how much this costs?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then?
But I will actually submit the request before your next meeting. But I can, I can share that with you.
And then we can reach out to our. And then we can reach out to our.
Yeah.
Internally, the process starts very early and is scrutinized and scrutinized. It won't get to the city council, I don't think, until like April, maybe.
Okay.
Oh, that's when they approve it, okay.
And that's March, okay.
They will actually see what's, what's coming forward, so.
And then it's.
And if that changes too, I'll, I'll definitely let you guys know.
So we can attend.
So you don't have to go home tonight and, and call five council members, but in, in your travels and in community.
Yeah, can you, um, in the January meeting, would you mind just walking us through what that budgeting development timeline looks like from January to April? I was curious around like our touchpoints with city council and yes, just like what to, yeah.
Something we can do, yes.
Thank you.
So also in our last meeting, um, you know, we, we discussed maybe changing, um, the coffee with trustee's name. But also too, you know, we have the opportunity, we're, next time we meet, we're going into a new year. So we can actually even change the activity or event as well. So I'm open for like recommendations on something, um, you know, that, that we're still advocating for the community meeting with the community, meeting with the community.
So, thanks for, for bringing that up. So I feel, I suggest that instead of having coffee with the community, we can read with the community. We can do reading with the youth, reading with the, um, the preschoolers. The seniors.
And you all have a very active staff and engaged staff, so maybe we could, you know, may, maybe present with them if they're open to it, something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, Justine works well with the youth, I don't need to put you on the spot to, but.
Yeah, she does.
And our new trustee, you know, had some feedbacks on that one too. We can arrange, uh, reading with the youth, you know, reading with the teenagers, reading with the seniors. Can actually go to a senior home. We're surrounded with all the senior places over here.
Okay, so read.
I'm into it.
Trustees, what is our name? Trustees Read with Community Trustees.
Oh, just say Reading with the Trustees.
Reading with the Trustees, okay.
Yeah, we can go into events that already exist, but actually participate versus being on the side, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, I like that, thank you, thank you for that idea. And I think, you know, if we do it bi-monthly, it's not a big deal, um, in terms of scheduling. And there, I feel like, you know, with the board, there's five of us now, there will always be like a representative at least, right, one or two. So we'll change that to Reading with Trustees. Um, would you li-, would you all like to do one already in January, or should we save that for next meeting?
What would be your story times on your, the, for the, for the, for the little ones?
We have, thank you. At the ceremony main library, uh, we have a, uh, family story time on Tuesday mornings at ten fifteen. And then on Thursday mornings, same time, ten fifteen, um, we have a baby bounce with very young children. And then, um, Tuesday afternoon, um, this afternoon at four, um, there is a still as yet forming, um, preschool story time. At the Westlake Library, there is a Wednesday morning baby bounce story time for the very young children, ten fifteen. And then on Thursday, at same time, there is a, um, a baby bounce there, or a, a family story time there. And at John Daly, it's an evening story time, six P M. on Wednesdays. And at Bay Shore, four P M. on Thursdays.
Okay. No activities for the youth, nothing?
For?
For any of the libraries?
Oh, for the teenagers.
Oh, um, I mean, there's different things, there's zone, there's.
Is there any way we can inject ourselves to any of that planning? We can, I mean, we can go think about it, we can shoot in an email to each other, what, you, we can all look at the schedules and what they are?
That sounds good.
And what we feel comfortable in doing?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
And if we're really wanting to, um, you know, um, engage with each of those, um, categories in the community, um, age groups, we can start, right?
Yeah.
What, um, you know, we, we want, and then the next one will jump into the different age group.
Okay, so, we'll figure out something in January.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm down to start with the, the little ones first since that's already.
And then move, move it up. All right, thank you. Um, library visits, has anybody had an opportunity to visit any of our libraries and get some updates? No? And so for, um, our community involvement, looks like there was, um, successful representation by both, um, Justine and Teresa at the Bay Shore block party. Um, did you want to talk a little bit about that?
So it was our first annual block party, and there were vendors, um, it turned out really good. It was, um, we're planning the second one already. And, um, there was not a lot, there were a lot of people showing up, a lot of people. We actually closed one part, portion of Shirin, just to, um, make sure that everybody's safe. But everybody was on board, um. There were, there were different departments there, their Boys and Girls Club. We have the Jefferson High Schools, High School School District, um, the sub-tenantants were there and whatnot. So maybe we can, you know, we can actually, to the libraries, we can actually have a table.
Have a table next time.
There next time.
Yeah, I think that's totally possible. It was a beautiful event.
You were there, so.
Yeah, I got a chance to be there. I was supporting another table, but it was nice to see the community and, um, there's totally opportunity for us to table.
A trustee table?
Or we can ask D C P L A, you know, if they want to.
Partnership with us so we can go together.
Or to do some sort of like fundraising activities, since there's a lot of, um, vendors and stuff in the room. So I think that could be an option for the next block party, let me pull them, yeah.
Sounds good. All right, so, um, any announcements or communications?
Oh, yes, uh, there is a citywide holiday closure this year, set to start, uh, December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, and through the new year, so that, that week. With the exception of, you know, police and fire and, and, you know, water and wastewater. I, I hate to use this word, but non-essential employees are not working during that period. So if, if you're not a police officer or a firefighter or working on the sewer or water line, um, we won't be working. And I'm hoping all of you got an invitation to the commissioner's dinner, it's coming up soon.
My R S V P?
Yes.
And you probably also got an invitation today for Frosty Fest.
There seem to be a lot of invitations.
Time of year, there's a lot of holiday themed activity.
Yeah.
It's the first time.
Yeah, the tree lighting also.
The tree lighting, yes. And then there's the other, the talent show, the, it's show called Talent Show is coming up at Chili Gym too, so. A lot of wintertime holiday themed activities on the calendar.
We'll connect so that we have some representation, um, and I know it's hard with people's schedules and everything. All right, so let's go ahead and, um, do our agenda building for our next meeting in 2020. We will leave the budget priorities on the agenda and advocating for, um, three F T E. Okay, and so we will get some updates from you, Joseph, even though you'll be rolling it out prior to our meeting. And, um, I think we can all, uh, reach out, um, to the council members that have appointed us and be, really be advocates for this. I know I will, um, okay. And then for, um, our advocacy's, um, we will go ahead and move forward with the Reading with Trustees. We'll go ahead and decide, um, when our next event will be, I'm really excited about that. And then, um, for, we'll, we'll keep, um, library visits on the agenda, because I do think it's important for us to visit, um, you know, on a one-off and get, um, feedback from the staff there, even patrons, okay? And for, um, community involvement, we will get some updates on, you know, the holiday events that we're able to attend. Anything else that you all would like to put on the agenda?
It sounds good.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, so we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.